I call to order this meeting of Montague County Commission for June 21st, first day of summer 2017. Just note for the record, all commissioners are present. If you would, please rise from over to silent meditation. Let's get right.
Thank you.
My pleasure. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, Renetta. Consent and approval, please.
We have four exonerations for 7/25/27, vouchers for General County, 186-28, excuse me, 186-826-45, coal severance, 5577-92, 911-737-37, Chestnut Ridge Park, $400, Camp Muffley, 186-45, Mason Dixon Park, $2,009,5542, Assessor's valuation, $5,008,3191, Morgantown Industrial Tiff, $5,257,77, purchasing card vouchers, General County, $19,242, for a grand total of $227,015,29. We have budget revisions, state approval for law enforcement, assessors, and parks, in-house budget revisions for the county clerk, county clerk elections, and emergency management. Vacancies on the Board of Zoning Appeals for the Western Planning District, the Planning Commission, and the Mon County Historic Landmarks Commission, fiduciary orders for June 21st, 2017.
Thank you.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded for approval. All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Introduction of new employees. Carrie, I believe you're up first.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to introduce to you Kristi Nutter. She has started today as her first day in the county clerk's office. She will be a full-time employee and entitled to benefits.
Excellent.
Good morning.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded for approval. All in favor? Aye. Welcome.
Thank you.
Glad to have you. Next, Ms. Cat here.
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Unfortunately, Jacob could not make it today, but our new housekeeping employee is Jake Kibert. He started on Friday, and he is paid at $925 per hour.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded for approval. All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cat. Anything else to report while you're here?
Could I just say thank you, just tell the other county commissioners, Cat is willing to collect each time she has a show at the camp, they're collecting funds for the pantry plus more program, and we appreciate the work she's done, and we really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Gosly, Youth Services.
I am not Jennifer Gosly. I'm Regina Burgess. I'm here as the Chair of the CASA, and I'm here to present our new Executive Director, Kayla Taylor Benson, who will officially be starting with us on the 26th, and she has a master's degree in public administration, currently works for the Youth Advocacy Center, Child Youth Advocacy Center.
Excellent.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded for approval. All in favor? Aye. Thank you. And welcome.
Yes.
Nice to have you. We know the work that CASA does, okay? So, we're familiar. Any others, just in case. Hearing none, we'll move to comments from the public. We are now open for comments from the public. Yes.
First, I want to thank the commissioners who are moving so quickly on the Bartlett House. I gave you a, excuse me, sheet of paper of a meeting that the executive director had with the few remaining people at the Bartlett House. Again, this is my opinion, but there's some good things in there, and there's some frank CYA kind of things in there. The day program, and I use the term "program" very loosely, because there's no programming that goes on there. It is now shut. People have no place to go during the day. One couple that I in particular am very good friends with, the wife is in a wheelchair because of a long-term serious back injury, and that means her male companion has to push her all up and down the street, all day long, from 8:00 in the morning to 8:00 at night. And when I saw him yesterday, he looked absolutely exhausted. I know we only have three minutes, but all these things on, again, I apologize, that the residents are supposed to do, I obviously don't disagree with, but it's written in an adversarial tone, as if we have been doing these things. Again, I've been there a month, tearing up property, being overly loud and disorder, all the things on the list there are not happening on a regular basis. And they, again, I'm sorry, the Bartlett House likes to characterize that we're an unruly group, and then use that as their mental gymnastics to justify treating us as nothing, as people who have no worth. And again, I know you all can't do anything about that. I'm just filling in on more background for when that, excuse me, when that meeting between the three of you and the representatives comes up. And again, very thankful that you all have moved so quickly on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the public?
Did you need his name, address, I mean, did you need his name and address?
Please, I, 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 we've got it.
He was here last night.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay, thank you.
We've got it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll close comments from the public and move on to the introduction of Morgan Breeden, 2016, Miss West Virginia.
Good morning.
Good morning. How are you?
We're good.
Great. So, I'm very excited to be here, meeting with the Montegalia County Commission. I'm from Jefferson County, and I guess just to start, I just left the interview process at Miss West Virginia, so by Saturday, you'll have a new Miss West Virginia, all about through Morgantown and the rest of the state. So, it's very exciting, very sad for me, but the girls are interviewing, very tough interview process. For those of you who may not know, a Miss America/Miss West Virginia interview is heavily based on current events, about your personal platform. Every girl has a social issue that they bring to the state organization, local organization, and national, that they deeply care about and that they hope to make a difference with. So, they can be anything about current events, to your platform, to about yourself, very, very tough interviews. They prepare you for life, they prepare you for just about anything that you can encounter. So, once again, I'll tell you a little bit about where I started and where I came from competing in the Miss West Virginia pageant. We have sometimes misconceptions about pageant girls and the stigma that surrounds us, and I began as a small-town girl on the baseball field of, in Summit Point, West Virginia, on the very edge of the eastern panhandle, and I never thought being in a pageant would be in my future, until I met a Miss West Virginia, and I saw that she was more than a crown and a sash, or a dress, or something beautiful. She had a heart, she had a willingness to serve, and she was doing amazing things. We see so many people doing amazing things, much like yourselves, and these girls are too. They're doing things that are truly important, and I'm very blessed to be a part of this organization. I remember when I first came to Morgantown, I was 11 years old. We have a Monarch Miss mentoring program at Miss West Virginia, so that allows girls from the ages of four to 16 to learn about community service and learn about having a volunteer's heart, and also learn about what it means to compete in this Miss America organization. So, it's okay. I like that. I'm gonna have to get that ringtone for you. So, I remember the first time I came into Morgantown. Living in Jefferson County, Trawse Town, West Virginia, I hadn't been to Morgantown. I really hadn't traveled deep into West Virginia at all. And when I came off of Exit 1, passing the waterfront, I literally thought it was in Hollywood. I said, "This is amazing," and I thought that I was basically Miss America, coming in to be a Monarch Miss in the mentoring program at Miss West Virginia. And so, my first time in Morgantown, I always reflect back on that as I come here every year, to either have, I've competed, but this year I would be relinquishing the title that has meant the world to me. For the past 10 years, I've tried to obtain this title. I competed in the teen division and in the miss. I wouldn't compete in something I didn't believe in. I wouldn't spend so much time year-round for the past 10 years in something that I did not believe in. And I'm very, very proud of this organization. They are so much more than what meets the eye. They're resilient, and they are just truly wonderful because they care so much about people. So, it is wonderful to be here in Morgantown, just sharing, I guess, a little bit about my path and why I chose, every girl has a different story. And so, no matter how many Miss West Virginias, Miss Morgantowns, or Miss University Cities you meet, always take time to know her story because she truly wants to make a difference. And this pageant is doing so many incredible things. So many people come to Morgantown each year. Our judging panel, we have a gentleman from Alabama, a gentleman from Colorado, a wonderful woman from North Carolina, and last year we had several panel, or some, several members on our panel from Kentucky. They come from all over, all here in Morgantown, to see one of the brightest places in our state, one of the most well-known places in our state. And I think that's so cool that we gather here in Morgantown to see something awesome happen, because I know that for me, Miss America is a home, home name. Everybody knows what Miss America is. My grandparents talk about how, when they were younger, they had three channels on TV, and they gathered around with popcorn to watch that competition. And something has to be said about a competition that's been going on for near 100 years, something about their integrity and about their character. So, if my grandparents believe in it, then so do I. My grandparents are about the best people I know, and I've always dreamed of being part of this organization, and being able to share the capabilities and the character about this organization means everything to me. I just hope that everybody has a deeper understanding that it's not a beauty pageant, it's a scholarship organization. We give these dollars to our girls to further their education, and because of this, I will be going to college nearly debt-free. And I'm taking two online classes right now as I am experiencing my final week in this wonderful pageant world, and all thanks to the scholarship dollars, scholarship dollars of the Miss West Virginia organization. And so, I can't stress to you enough what it's done for me and how it's helped me evolve as a person, the confidence it's given me, the interview skills, and being able to meet people from across the state, from different walks of life, and appreciate every aspect. Because, like I said, I grew up in the eastern panhandle. I didn't do a whole lot of traveling, and Morgantown was a big city to me, and I was like, wow. But I've gotten to see every square inch of this state, from the northern panhandle, of course, my eastern, southern, central, western, you name it. And each part brings something so very different, but one thing we have in common is that everybody's unified in their humble personality, and I think Miss West Virginia represents that. We're very down-to-earth girls. I like to say it's the non-pageant girls' pageant, because we all see what media wants us to see, but we're just a lot of ordinary girls trying to do extraordinary things. So, thank you for your time. I appreciate it. And look for, on your Sunday papers, for the new Miss West Virginia. I know she's gonna be wonderful. She's gonna be a great representative for our state.
Thank you so much. I have a personal sharing with this, in that I narrowly lost an election in 2008, and it didn't have too much to do at the time, and so, we resurrected at that time the Montague County Fair. And this brought me in contact with pageantry. I actually didn't know too much about it. And to see, over the course of the years now that have followed, the confidence, the poise that the ladies exhibit at all ages, and that they're able to do and go out in the world, is really what you have just demonstrated.
Well, thank you.
I thank you.
Well, thank you.
Mr. President, Morgan, I know you're a little modest, you didn't want to say, but I want to thank Kelly Palmer and Cindy Colasante. You are gonna be donating your time tomorrow at the Food Bank Giveaway at Riverside Apostolic Church, all the candidates. So, we really appreciate that, being a part of it.
Yeah, absolutely.
I also want to say also to Catherine Guarn, who's also with WBOY, they are also bringing people too. So, again, we appreciate that you're part of our community, and we're really glad and look forward to seeing you out there.
Wonderful. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Tom, do you have anything to add?
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Sorry for my phone going off.
That's okay.
We're still dealing with some technology out there. As you can hear, the sound's interrupting you, but I appreciate you coming here and talking. I have to ask, where are you going to school?
I go to school at Shepherd, and I am studying psychology. I hope to be a clinical child psychologist one day, so I've got a long road of schooling ahead of me, but it'll be all worth it. I think that educating and listening and being there for our youth is one of the most important things. I mean, after all, all of us in this room are doing great things, but they're gonna be the movers and the shakers who shape our world for us, so.
We're always glad to hear that you're staying in school in-state, and hopefully you'll stay in-state.
My daughter graduated from Shepherd, and it's a great experience.
Wonderful.
It's fantastic. I wish we could do the art and culture that Shepherdstown does.
Well, you know, it's rare. It's rare for, to be in Morgantown and hear something about Shepherd. So, that's great. Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks again.
Thank you. Next, we have a resolution for Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month.
I was about to say, "Good afternoon," but I guess it's still morning, so good morning, everybody.
If you had a thought about yourself.
My name is Christina Beck. I'm the regional coordinator with the Alzheimer's Association, and on behalf of the Alzheimer's Association, we're asking the Montegalia County Commission to declare June Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month. So, whereas the month of June 2017 has been declared Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month to help spread awareness of this debilitating disease and the need to increase efforts to combat its human and economic costs, and whereas the summer solstice, June 21st, 2017, has been declared the longest day with teams around the world coming together to honor the strength, passion, and endurance of people facing Alzheimer's disease with the Day of Activity and Advocacy. And whereas Alzheimer's disease, a progressive nor degenerative brain disorder, tragically robs individuals of their memories and leads to mental and physical impairments, and whereas West Virginia has 37,000 residents living with Alzheimer's, and by 2025 will have projected 44,000 residents living with the disease. And where West Virginia Medicaid spent 394 million caring for people with Alzheimer's. And whereas Alzheimer's disease is always fatal, and today is the sixth leading cause of death. And whereas Alzheimer's disease is a family disease impacting West Virginia's spouses, partners, children, siblings, and other relatives who provide unpaid assistance to the loved ones. And whereas West Virginia caregivers devote 122 million total hours of unpaid care to family members valued at over $1.5 billion in non-government financial support. And whereas, on average, a person with Alzheimer's disease lives four to eight years after diagnosis, but can live as long as 20 years, depending on other factors. And whereas individuals living with Alzheimer's disease and their caregivers need acknowledgement, support, and services to meet their needs over this lengthy process of Alzheimer's disease and related dementias. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the County Commission of Montegalia County, West Virginia, recognizes the month of June 2017 as Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month, recognizes June 21st, 2017, as the longest day in Montegalia County, West Virginia, and urges all residents to wear purple on this day to help to spread global awareness of the Alzheimer's Association's vision of imagining a world without Alzheimer's disease. Thank you very much. And I also want to say, my own father has Alzheimer's disease, and it's, I started with the association four years ago, my father got diagnosed two years ago. And living at firsthand, it's a disease that needs attention of not only Montegalia County, but West Virginia and the whole United States and the world. So, thank you.
Move for approval.
Mr. President, if I might add, my own father had Alzheimer's. He finally passed away from it in 2001, and I understand everything you're saying about it. I never really knew at what point we really lost him, you know, because it was 10, or it was about seven years through the progression, so I really appreciate you coming here, and I'm wholeheartedly in favor of this resolution, so I'd like to move that we approve it.
Second.
Yeah, it's been properly moved. Second, to adopt the resolution. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. I truthfully don't believe there's anybody who hasn't had one person that they know that has been affected. I mean, I had an uncle. I think every family has been touched by this particular disease, so thank you for coming today.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Colleen with Grants.
I'm gonna have a good pre-de signing today.
Okay. All right. Then we'll move on to correspondence. Renetta?
Received a letter from the West Virginia Department of Environmental Protection notifying the Commission of their appointment of Eldon A. Callan to the Montague County Solid Waste Authority. So, you probably just need to accept that.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded for this appointment. All in favor? Aye. Thank you.
And we also have, yeah, one other thing. A memorandum that was sent to us by W. Michael Sheets, Director of West Virginia Purchasing Division, just giving their assistance, or just as a reminder, that anything, any contracts that the state has approved that we can piggyback off of, and we can be added to their mailing to subscription list if we so choose. I don't know if I just want to do anything with that or not. That's all.
All right. Let's move on then to unfinished business. Do we have any? Hearing none, we'll move on to new business. Kelly, are you presenting the consideration for the request for the scholarship?
No.
No? Okay. Renetta?
We received a memo from Ms. Kelly Palmer.
Okay. I thought she might be speaking on his behalf.
Oh, no, we hadn't, we hadn't discussed that.
Okay. Would you like to speak on his behalf?
Would you like to?
Please do so, okay?
Morgan, you were prepared. I'm just not.
Thank you. Once again, I stand before the County Commission, and we are requesting sponsorship for the Miss West Virginia organization on behalf of the Judges Committee. In the past, you all have been gracious and have made a contribution to the support of the housing and meals for the judges, because we feel that it is a tourism project, whereas, as Morgan explained earlier, that we have our judges coming in from all over the country, many of them return, excuse me, bringing their families for visits once they've been here. We have our Monarch Miss program. We have 47 girls this year from all over the United States, not just West Virginia, with their families. Of course, grandparents want to see their grandkids onstage and wearing their crown and sash, so we were just asking again for your consideration of a contribution.
In a specific amount, that was requested was $1,500?
Yes, sir.
For approval?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded for approval of a grant of $1,500 to support this. All in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, consider approval of depository bond designation and escrow agreement as presented by the Citizens Bank of Morgantown. Renetta, any elaboration upon that?
No, not really. It pretty speaks for itself.
Move to approve the agreement.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the agreement. All in favor? Aye. Thank you. One other item?
I received a letter yesterday, and that's why it's not on the agenda. It's from Evan Hansen, who has been asked to write a REIT grant for the Mon County Solid Waste Authority, which basically would get a better data regarding recycling participation and effectiveness of the program, and they're just asking for us for a letter of support. And I would ask that be on the agenda next week. The reason why I had to bring it up now is because they have to get their application out June 29th, but I wanted them to know that we were gonna put it on the agenda to be discussed, and I appreciate that, and I'm glad to see the Solid Waste Authority getting, moving forward again.
Good. All right. Any other new business?
No, sir.
Hearing none, we'll move to reports from elected officials. Any reports from elected officials? Hearing none, we'll go to reports from county commissioners. Tom?
Yes, as I stated, tomorrow is the Pantry Plus More and the Mountaineer Food Bank Giveaway that we do once a month. It'll be at Riverside Apostolic Church parking lot, and we have some special guests that will be helping out, and I do really appreciate that. We're looking at, again, 15,000 pounds of fresh produce and 5,000 pounds of meats and chicken, and really, it's unfortunate we have to do this, but at the same time, I'm really glad that the county commissioners are part of this, and I'm really glad we're able to do this. Second, I was fortunate to be in Granville. We had the opening of the Black Bears game, and 2,700 people showed up, and then, of course, poured around the seventh inning. But I was fortunate also, I mean, Ed was there, I know Sean couldn't make it, but Mr. Ruth was there, and also the president of the Pittsburgh Pirates, who couldn't say enough about Montague County Commission. I mean, they were just ecstatic about what they had been from Jamestown to what they're doing here, the community, and I wanted to pass on from the county commissioners how much I was appreciative of their support of the different events that they go into the community. They did ask about one issue, and I just wanted to bring it up, and I know we're gonna look into it. We had requested signage, the DOH said, we filled out all the applications, and they just asked if we could find out where we are, and I asked Renetta to find out what's going on with that. But that is, that is it all, positive news.
Good. And Tom?
Not too much to report. I've had, I remember, a couple of meetings regarding the leasing program that I'm looking into, and there's a lot of exciting news. Hopefully, within the next week or so, I'll be able to come to you guys and share that information with you. I appreciate, I don't know if Perry's here, but I appreciate Captain Ralston. He's been really beneficial, and, you know, we've been going back and forth, and rather than half and a half, a bunch of meetings, you know, sharing information back and forth, and also, Renetta, I appreciate you forwarding me in information. I was able to spend Father's Day watching my daughter play softball in Bridgeport, which I was telling Ed earlier, the most difficult thing in sports is, in baseball, is to hit a fastball. And when you could teach your daughter to hit a fast pitch, and then see her as she progresses, you know, that's the most wonderful Father's Day gift I could have had. We ended up winning a championship. We didn't lose a game in a tournament, and we ended up winning a championship for Father's Day, so that was pretty cool. And my daughter was able to actually contribute, which was great for her. I'm sorry, I wasn't able to make the opening day, but my daughter had a league game, and there's only so many of those that I'll be able to participate in, so I was at that. And we didn't get rained out. We got it in before the rain came. Having said that, I appreciate the, you know, with today, the mention about Alzheimer's Day, and Sunday being Father's Day, I, you know, I kind of tied it all together, so I appreciate that. And the only other thing we talked about was the meeting that, Mr. Maz, you had talked about would be July 5th in a working session, correct? And we probably just need to talk about the parameters of that.
Sure.
But other than that, that's all. Oh, and sorry for my phone going off. I probably, everybody here gets a ball again.
A ball again. Well, first of all, I would like to thank Tom, who went to the MPO meeting last Thursday, and this allowed Sean and I to attend the final council circle at 4-H Camp, Camp Muffley. It is appreciated. We do sometimes have to spread ourselves a bit thin on meetings. Also, on that day, I met with the city manager, Paul Bright, more or less just a meeting to discuss mutual interest that the city and this commission may have now and in the future. Mr. Doyle attended the first part of this meeting because of the courthouse square work that we're currently undergoing. Yes, it was the opening day of the Black Bears, and yes, I got very wet. Fortunately, the foul ball, I stood up to take a picture of, you know, because I was going to lord it over people on Facebook, and I was in the expensive seat, and literally right after that, a foul ball came so close right after that, a foul ball came so close to me that I had to do this. So, perhaps hubris should not be, you know, in my future. I did visit four-H Camp again yesterday because the day camp is there, and it's very special to see the young, people ask me sometimes about dentistry, and if I miss it, I don't miss dentistry, but I watch, you know, when I see the young children growing up in these programs, that's something that I miss about what I had with my former profession. We also, Tom sent me this note here, we have everything now on the computer, so I don't want anybody out there, it's, maybe they might be thinking, they keep looking at their computers, we're not on Facebook here. What we're looking at is everything is going paperless, so our agenda, as well as all the items that we are, before used to have realms of paper, are now going to be on this computer screen. So, when we're referring to the computer, we're looking just simply to see what's going on, okay? And with that, I will welcome Summer and call for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
We are adjourned, thank you.